All right, here we go. All right, I'm gonna call the meeting to order. Welcome to the February 19, 2019 special work session. Donna, call the roll, please.
Yes. Mr. Wright?
Here.
Mr. Attia?
Here.
Ms. Hodges?
Present.
Ms. Cruzman?
Here.
Ms. Pasley?
Here.
Dr. Green?
Here.
Where did he go?
Larry left.
Oh, okay. Sorry, Larry, sorry.
Not here.
Not here.
All right, moving on. Can I have a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved.
Second.
Motion in a second. Any discussion? Changes? Hearing none. Call of vote, please.
Mr. Wright?
Yes.
Mr. Attia?
Yes.
Ms. Hodges?
Yes.
Ms. Cruzman?
Yes.
Ms. Pasley?
Yes.
Dr. Green?
Yes.
All right, moving on. Items for discussion. APR report and update.
What we wanted to do was give you an opportunity to have this information highlighted individually, rather than maybe buried in a board meeting with other things going on, so that Marley and her team could spend a little bit more in-depth time with you and maybe not have some of the other distractions of other agenda items, so that they could really highlight the academic things that we are doing. This is probably the first of just several things that we'll do as we continue moving forward, but it did take a little while for us to get the information from the state. Otherwise, we probably would've done something like this a little bit sooner. So, again, Marley and her team have worked to put this information together, so that felt... Now over to Dr. Williams.
Thank you very much. We did not just focus on the annual performance report, because as you know, the annual performance report this year is highlighting data that is almost one year old and isn't comparable to previous year's data. So what we've done is we've given you an academic services overview that includes information from our interim assessments like I Ready and Lexia, as well as focuses on our academic services strategic plan. So what I did to begin with, you have all of the documents that are laying next to you, I've given them to you in other board meetings, but I just wanted to bring them back to the table as reminders, that our academic services strategic plan is something that we've been working through and focused on for the last about two and a half years. So these are items that we continue to work on and aren't something that are just products of us presenting to you today in this work session. So that is what is next to you. The format for this, really, you'll see all of the academic services directors here at the table with us, and that's because this is our presentation, this is not my presentation. So you'll see Dr. Lau, Dr. Huback, Dr. Thomason, and Dr. Norman. We'll all take portions of this, because we share the work. And at the end of the presentation, we will have time for questions. We know that this boardroom is being used after this meeting, so we tried to condense it into about 60 minutes, so time for presentation and then time for questions as well. But of course, if you have any along the way, don't hesitate to stop us. So we'll begin with the academic services goals. These are the same three goals that you've seen on the strategic plan, all of the times that I presented to you in the open board meetings, as well as on the school improvement and professional development plans. I only printed the first portion, the first 18 pages of that SIP and PD document, but every school has a school improvement and professional development plan aligned to these goals. And the focusing documents are what you have in front of you. For the full document, you can go to the academic services webpage and you can see every individual school's plan that is aligned to these goals. So alignment is important and something that I'm proud that this academic services team is working toward in the district, so that there is consistency across the school district in terms of goals and expectations for students. You're going to see later that we have high mobility, and we want students to have comparable opportunities in every school, no matter where they attend. So our first goal, you'll see there, is to reduce the gap between present and desired performance. That is really in the areas of literacy and numeracy. We know that in reading and math, those are critical foundational skills, and we want our students to be really above grade level is our goal. Goal two, you know that we have been working on the Gallup Student Poll to measure hope and engagement. Remember that non-academic indicators are required by ESSA, and the St. Joseph School District was ahead of the curve on that when we began giving the Gallup Student Poll a few years ago. And then goal three is to build meaningful relationships with families in the community, not only in terms of family involvement and those coordinators we have in our elementary schools, but also partnerships that we have with businesses and organizations in the community that bridge those gaps between public education and career readiness. The next slide. So some challenges that we face as a district is really to provide systemic support for instructional resources. As you know, when we brought on Lexia and I Ready, it was a challenge for us to make sure that every school in the district was implementing consistently and with fidelity. And to provide that ongoing professional development support at the job-embedded table during conference periods, during district professional development, that has been quite an enormous undertaking. But we're pleased with the user analytics that we're getting back. It is being used across the district consistently, and I think that is really, Kendra gets a lot of credit for that, the targeted plan that she has for implementation and the ongoing support that she provides. We work with our curriculum advisor team as well to provide that support, to make sure that teachers understand the tools and are able to use them, and that they're not cumbersome to our staff. Closing gaps is a challenge for us. In our district, many of our students lack school readiness, and so closing the gap doesn't just mean taking students on an annual growth per. It means that they have to grow more than what is average for one academic year. So for students to get on grade level, a lot of times they have to grow what would be the equivalent of one and a half, two, or three years' worth of academic growth in a single academic year. So that's a challenge for our teachers, to meet the needs of students with varying levels of school readiness. And then climate and culture issues are part of the non-academic side of things that are challenging. We have more mental health and behavioral needs for support, more trauma than we have had or have seen in the past, and providing that social-emotional support in addition to working to close those academic gaps, it can provide significant challenges for our teachers. So earlier in the year, I think it was back in January, I sent you this one-page overview as part of a Friday update. This really encapsulates those 18 pages that you have in front of you stapled together, because who can remember everything on 18 pages, really? And really, having a one-page placemat that is an overview is important, just kind of a quick and ready sort of document, and that is what you see there. I just wanted to remind you that, again, we're not going at this haphazardly. We really do have a focused approach that is planned and systematic, and this is the overview of that. And finally, before I turn it over to Dr. Thomason, we have... Go ahead, to the next slide. Again, you've seen this before. We put together a two-page foundational practices document. All of our principals have been using this since we rolled it out in the fall. And what we've noticed is, really, the impetus behind this was that so many of our staff members have fewer years of experience than in previous years. So we've had turnover in the district, not only in the teaching ranks, but also in the leadership ranks. So it was important to have consistent foundational sort of minimal expectations. What do we expect to see in the classroom environment? What do we expect to see in terms of math instructional practices? So that our leaders and our mentor teachers can help those new, less experienced staff members understand what are the minimal expectations in the St. Joseph School District for instruction, for environment, and for really innovation, which you know has been key for us. I was going to toss it to you too soon. Two slides too soon, sorry. So what do we look like in the St. Joseph School District? Here are two snapshots from our Bright Bites dashboard. We have 7% of our students who are English language learners, 14% of them have... 14% of our students in the district have individual education plans, which are IEPs for special education, and 2% of our students have Section 504 plans, which are not special education plans, but do mean that they have some kind of issue that is a significant impediment to education. 71% free and reduced lunch. 3% of our students qualify under McKinney-Vento for homelessness, and about 15% of our students finish the school year in a different school than they started. And that doesn't count how many stops they've made in between.
Question. On the free and reduced lunch, the 71%, how does that compare to past years? That seems higher.
It's a little bit higher.
Other questions on homelessness? What are the parameters that trigger that?
They don't have a regular and predictable place to go to sleep every night.
I would've thought our special ed would be more than 14%.
It was 16% a couple of years ago, which was higher than the state average. So one of the goals that Dr. Versmeyer and Dr. Thomason have had is to make sure that we are accurately identifying students who have special needs. So that is about the same level as we had in the past?
That's 14% is actually rounded. It was more about, when I looked up the other day, about 13.8.
Okay. Which would be, I believe, if I remember correctly, Michelle, that's right, about the same percentage as the state would expect. Is that right?
They would like it closer to 12.
Okay.
But we've made significant gains in reducing it. Things downward.
Any other questions about that? And then the next dashboard that you see from Bright Bites is our... It's our intervention and targets indicators. And what you see here is nine years' worth of data. I think that's important for you to understand in terms of performance attendance and behavior. So we can look at students and see whether they are red, yellow, or green in terms of risk for academic performance toward graduation, for chronic absenteeism that will inhibit on-time graduation, or for behaviors. And those would be significant behaviors that are logged as having had consequences throughout the past nine years. Any questions about that? And so as part of the new state statute for ninth-grade risks, this is the dashboard that we're using. I know that Kendra spoke to you about that several months ago in a board meeting, but this is how we are identifying students who are at risk in ninth grade.
What's the biggest shift? Which category have you seen shift towards?
This is the first time we've used this dashboard.
Okay.
But I would tell you, just from an anecdotal perspective, some of the trauma and behavior indicators would be things that are rising to the level opposing more challenges than we've seen in the past.
What's the unavailable risk category?
Say that again.
The unavailable risk category. I don't know what that means.
The bottom of each one.
The bottom of each one, there's a gray.
Oh, the gray bar.
Yeah.
So that would be students... Go ahead, Kendra, you want us to say something?
Well, it's usually the kindergarten students that don't have a lot of data, or students that are new to the district. So those risk predictions can be calculated with the algorithms that generate those numbers.
Because we have like 72% for these three things here, so that seems like it'd be more than that number of people.
Well, it's not necessarily looking at the particular... that whole picture, it's just looking at the ones that are unavailable at that particular time for those calculations. So we went back nine years' worth of data.
And something like post-secondary, you wouldn't necessarily be checking with elementary students, for example.
And you know, so for that one, you'd have to take that into consideration.
That's a huge percentage. Why are we not...
That's post-secondary.
But that makes sense. Thank you.
This is pulling data from?
Power School.
Power School. Any other sources?
Yes. Power School test scores.
Test scores, but it goes back... The way that they calculated the predictions is based on a model that was created off of our nine-year fingerprint of data.
So how...
So then it pulls the data through that.
Okay. So on the behavior, is it only grabbing... Is it making the assumption based on tardies and missing work, or is it getting input data from counselors or both?
Yes, there is something also called log entries in Power School. So anyone who has a conference or has a consequence in that log entry category in Power School would have information for that.
And you used a phrase earlier, you said trauma or behavioral. Are both included in here? And how...
So, trauma may or may not be. Sometimes students act out in ways that are behavioral, based on things they've experienced in their past, and those things may or may not have consequences.
I'm sorry, I don't mean to interrupt. Does anyone in here drive a black Ford Escape that has parked in front of the library? I'm sure somebody hit it, so we were trying to...
Oh, we would want to know that. Yes.
That would be an appropriate interruption.
Pork being towed.
Yes, I was assuming that one was all...
Well, it's now located.
Someone just got some trauma. So no, there isn't a label for trauma, so to speak. You would see manifestations from traumatic experiences that generally come through behaviors that make them inconsequential. Does that...
Yeah.
Do we have... I mean, I know some kids in trauma are like taking meds for PTSD and that, and are we... Is that something we're gauging?
Their nursing information is not...
Is not available, that's what, because that's a problem.
You can pull their medical history. But if... I'm guessing if they were on a behavior plan, like if somebody came in and said, hey, just want to let you know, we're going through a divorce, or somebody passed away in our family, noticed he'd been acting out at home, you could put a behavior plan in place, and that would probably be in there as data that would be pulled as somebody that was on a plan, that they were doing some type of intervention to try to help that child be successful. So you could be put on a behavior plan without any adverse behavior, then, based on your circumstances? You could do it, in my opinion, and if these guys can answer, you could do it as a preventative.
So you could like see a counselor twice a week?
Well, I would say from the high school perspective, something that would've happened on a regular basis was if someone came in and said, this is happening in our lives right now, we would do weekly check-ins with a counselor or a teacher or a vice principal, just to make those connections.
If they were... A teacher was close to them, maybe, or a vice principal they were familiar with, yeah.
You would much rather have those plans than letting them get further down the road, where now I've socked Marley in the face because she did something that, you know...
Triggered you.
Triggered me because she said something about my family or did whatever, and she had no clue what's going on. So you would try to... Those are positive, but I don't know that you can necessarily always pull those out. Sometimes you can, you can pull them out as positive planning, but I'm guessing they're all part of that number.
Okay. Next slide.
We're gonna take a little deeper look at special programs, which will take the snapshot Marley just shared, and we're gonna dive just a little bit deeper into that. And so the first category would be looking at special education, which of course comes from the Individuals with Disabilities Education Act of 2004. One thing that a lot of people don't realize is in order for a child to be eligible to receive special education services, we do intensive assessments, and they have to qualify by meeting standards and indicators that are set forth by the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education. So for each area of eligibility, there are very, very specific criteria that we have to go through and make sure that a child meets that area of eligibility. And currently, in the district, kindergarten through 12th grade, so this does not include early childhood, because we'll get to that in a minute, we have 1,505 students who meet the eligibility for special education services in one of the 13 areas that DESI designates. We have 707 elementary students, 295 middle school students, and 503 high school students with IEPs.
How often do they have to be reassessed?
They have to be reassessed every three years minimum, but they can be reassessed at any time. We feel like there's a need for that.
There's a change.
Correct.
And who does the testing?
We have people who are certified to test, qualified to test. So we have some retired process consultants, some of the process consultants do it, some teachers, but they're all qualified to give those assessments.
They have the special training. Sure. Thank you.
You're welcome. We also have Section 504, which Marley touched on briefly. Section 504 can be a little bit confusing. They're provided to students when it's determined that they have a disability that substantially limits one or more major life activity. Typically, where we see that is if a student has a medical condition that doesn't necessarily impede their ability to learn, but they need extra support. So to give an example, if you have a student who might have Crohn's disease, who might need time at the restroom or at the nurse's office, that would be a student.
Unexpectedly, in the middle of class, to leave, yeah.
Right, that would... Correct. That would qualify for a 504. We currently have 221 students with a 504 plan, and you can see the breakdown there for elementary, middle, and high school.
Gosh, I'm surprised it's that low. Do Debs students qualify for that?
Most of our students that are hearing impaired qualify for IEPs.
They do IEPs.
The other thing is, you don't necess... If you have that type of situation, you don't necessarily have to go on a 504.
Correct.
You can go to work with your administrative team and your teachers and do an accommodation plan that's outside of 504. Personally, I would prefer, that's what we did with most of those situations, just because just doing what you need to do for students, instead of having put it into a federally guided program now.
Unless you're gonna guide their testing, right, and then that's when you want to put it in. If it's gonna guide, like if they're gonna have anything read to them, or somebody's gonna scribe for them, or...
Typically, no, that would not be something that would be involved with a 504. That would need more accommodations, that would be under an IEP.
Can you give us non-educators a 504 example, or two, or three?
I'll give you one.
Can you give me some, what would qualify for that?
I had a little boy who had diabetes, and so he was on a 504 plan, because he was a very severe diabetic. And so some of the things were, you know, he got a little bit extra time to complete work, because he didn't always feel so well. He kept crackers. I put him in a desk, double desk, and then the desk next to him had crackers and things that he would be able to eat during the day that wouldn't be disruptive, and he would have to leave the classroom.
A lot of times, it's a health condition that creates absences or limits a child from being in the classroom, so you're only giving extra time, opportunity to work with a peer, to do some of their homework, doing those type of things. It can be things from... It can be, and I've had this severely overweight child that needed special accommodations for the desk that they had. You know, they just weren't fit, so he had to get a special desk, and they needed more time to get from class to class. So a lot of it does normally center around...
Medical condition.
Medical condition. Normally, your academic and learning disabilities will normally fall underneath your special education science.
Even though I've had students that have ADD, Attention Deficit Disorder, they're not hyperactivity, but now it's all under ADHD, I understand. But anyway, and they would be on a 504. They're highly intelligent, capable of doing the work and that, but we modified it.
There's always good... The caveat difference for 504, the way I understand it, Michelle, correct me if I'm wrong. It truly has to inhibit their learning situation. So just because I'm ADHD, if I'm taking medicine and I can manage, I don't have to be in a 504 plan. But you still want some, probably some type...
You don't have to be, but people...
And I would recommend you're not, because there's nothing now inhibiting your learning, because the medicine is helping you be successful. But that doesn't mean that you couldn't put some type of plan in place to help that child, because sometimes they're normally challenged when it comes to organization, or they're easily distracted by sitting by somebody who's a pen tapping, or, you know, those are the types of things that you should be able to do, in my opinion, even outside of 504s. These are normally gonna be some pretty severe situations that impact, that truly impact their ability to learn.
And our counseling department manages our 504 plans currently. They do a great job. They've really kind of taken that on this year, and Kim has done a great job with them. The next?
Question from May.
Yes.
Dr. Van Zijde had mentioned before that you could... The school district can make accommodations for these students more informally without a 504. So what determines whether a 504 is done versus just being taken care of?
It really depends on the type of... It's an individual thing. If you're talking about a child with severe diabetes, that's something that you probably... We want that written out for everyone. If it's a child that needs some extra time to be able to process or work through something because they have ADD, that would be something we would expect across the board for any educator to do. So that's something that doesn't necessarily need to be in a 504 plan.
A lot of times, parents, it's guided by parents, too, who require...
Prefer one over the other.
Yeah. But usually, and then, you know, the special education teachers help.
There is an area of eligibility. Just because somebody requests a 504 does not mean that they get a 504 plan.
And it has to be reevaluated, and there still have to be things done with the 504 to make sure it's still successful. To me, the biggest difference in a 504 and just a regular accommodation plan, it is truly about the severity of what is going on, in that there normally are some pretty rigid things that you have to do to make that child successful. Because as soon as you put a 504 in place, you do restrict the flexibility of what you can do for a child. You have to go through some of those federally mandated hoops of, you've gotta try this for so long, you've gotta do this, that's down in black and white, you have... Where some kids just need some flexibility. What may work for me today may not work for me tomorrow because of my mood or my attitude. But if the teacher is now restricted to that plan, and that's all they can do, it's gonna take probably three, four, or five weeks before you can do anything else, truly, because you have to adjust that plan.
And if you want to change it, it requires the whole coming together again. So it's much more rigid.
Okay, thanks.
Homebound services. We also offer homebound services to students. They are assigned for either medical reasons, students medically are unable to attend school, or as part of the continuum of IEP placements. And homebound services for IEP placements would be considered the absolute most restrictive learning environment that we could offer. This school year, we have had 32 students in the district qualified for homebound services. That does not mean we have 32 currently. That means over the course of the school year, we've had 32 students receive homebound services at one time or another. Three in pre-kindergarten, seven elementary, three middle school, and 19 high school students.
And so we have people who will provide those services.
Yes, we do.
Those are hard to find, aren't they?
Yes, we absolutely... And we have to. If a student is on homebound, we have to provide those services.
Michelle, what do you think is the disparity between elementary and middle school, and middle school to high school, for the number of special needs students that we have identified? Because you've got 700 in elementary, granted, that's probably a larger population of kids, but middle school to high school, you're not talking that large difference.
Correct. High school, you get into teen pregnancies. You also get into a lot more mental health, where children might be homebound due to mental health issues that might not manifest so much in elementary or middle school. Early childhood and parents as teachers. We currently have 155 students in early childhood special ed, and you can see the breakdown that Mary Fleming, the coordinator, has provided. For a total count of 184 students, which is a good amount. For parents as teachers, we have provided services to 993 students this year, or kids this year, in 666 families in St. Joseph for a total of 3,378 visits, which is quite a few.
How's that compared to last year and year four?
I don't have those numbers in front of me, but I can look that up for you if you'd like, Kathy.
Just curious.
Okay. I would say that, if I had to guess, I would say that's probably up a bit from last year. ESOL, English Speakers of Other Languages. We currently have 780 ESOL students, so students receiving services for ESOL who have been identified as ESOL students. And you can see the breakdown, we have a lot more in elementary, and typically, that's because if they're first moving to our country as elementary students, that's where they're gonna need the most intensive services. And then I thought it was probably beneficial to lay out the number of ESOL teachers that we have as well. So you have those numbers there.
20 doesn't seem quite enough, but hopefully we'll be... Only five in high school.
We're trying to hire more. We've had those posted. It is a challenge.
It is a challenge.
Finding ESOL teachers.
How many languages?
My son-in-law just graduated with it.
I'm not exactly sure.
28 was the last time.
28.
I mean, languages, as I was saying, it was 20 something.
Well, and the ESOL teachers don't speak those languages necessarily.
Correct.
They don't know at all.
Correct.
I don't know how they learn. I just can't imagine. It must be so difficult for the student.
It's significant. I mean, and we actually ran into an issue in the fall where we needed to get some documents translated for a family. And it was quite a challenge to find somebody who could actually translate documents in this language. And we have several families of students that we, we provide services to that speak, and it's, it's Chukies, that speak Chukies. But it can be quite a challenge for schools and for students and staff.
I tell you though, our district does a phenomenal job because my grandson came knowing five words in English, started in January, maybe ten words of English two years ago. And he's reading and doing math on a third grade level. He's in the ESL room twenty minutes a day for writing. I mean, your program is phenomenal. And no one spoke Thai, you know, he came from Thailand, no one spoke Thai. It's just, ugh, I can't even talk about it.
It's amazing.
He's a third grader. And he's, yeah, I mean, it's amazing.
And I worry too, his granddad.
The next little snapshot, we have your families in transition. And I think Lou, you asked a question about, about this. This is McKinney-Vento Act. And it, it's defined as children and youth who lack a fixed, regular, and adequate nighttime residence. And they are considered homeless. So right now, as of last week, we had three hundred and ninety-seven students pre-K through twelve who qualified for services through our Families in Transition Program. We provide special transportation to approximately one hundred students that qualify for homeless services. And this is through our special education buses. We have an Apple van. We provide services through two St. Joe's School District vans. We provide transportation vouchers through public transportation. And we also reimburse parents for mileage for transporting children. So we have a lot, there are a lot of moving parts when it comes to families in transition.
Now, that's quite a bit. Dan, last year, did I hear five hundred and sixteen? Where did I hear five hundred and sixteen?
I think it was a little bit over five hundred. This though, right now, this is the time of year where the numbers are growing greatly. This is significantly higher than it was even at Christmas.
Oh, is that right? Why?
Yeah, why is that?
I think just as people get identified, as they move in, we have a lot of people move in that are homeless. Or if somebody loses their job and they end up doubling up and moving in with another family. It's a twelve month, so as people drop off, more people come in. But it seems like the spring is when we get, our numbers tend to rise.
Is you've run through your calendar year and you start a new year, you either need to start a new housing contract or a new rental agreement or you have to do certain things. And then they're less likely to re-up those if they've had issues in the year before. And the weather does have an impact.
The weather does make a difference. Are there any questions about special programs before we move on to the next slide?
Who oversees like the gifted programs and those kind of things?
Kendra has gifted.
Thanks, Michelle.
So the first goal that we talked about was reducing the gap between present and desired. And Dr. Lau will be talking about reading and math in terms of I Ready, I Ready, Lexia, and RTI.
And so one of the first screens we're gonna look at in terms of data is out of Lexia. And that is a platform that we use grades K through five, although it does extend to six. Because oftentimes, as we've indicated, we have some, get some more growth to have happen before students are on grade level. The platform provides teachers with data and it also provides them with student-specific resources. And so we begin this very early in the school year. And the students take basically an auto placement. And it lets us know where they are in terms of grade level. And from the beginning of year, we have increased the students that are on grade level or above grade level to the point of this data was taken a snapshot on February eighth, sixty percent K through five are on grade level or above grade level. We use this data, really, we use it monthly, we use it weekly, we use it daily, we can use it more than once daily. The way that it is, it can be looked at for instruction for the teachers, for students to have resources, for principals to know on a weekly basis what by classroom the targets are for each student so that they can monitor that. They can start on Monday, they can look again on Wednesday and see again where we are on Friday. So it certainly helps to support building classroom and at a student level as well as a district level so that we can continue to monitor.
So when you hear us talk about growth and progress, Lexia and I Ready are what we're looking at because these tools both provide highly individualized information for each student. So a teacher isn't trying to give an assessment and then diagnose and come up with instruction every single day for each student. You have the ability to, to drill into that kind of information from these platforms. And then the teachers can pull very specified lessons for each student. Maybe it is that they don't understand the CH combination and that's holding them back from moving along, or they don't, they're not hearing some piece of phonics. That can be targeted that specifically, those splinter skills and, and help close those gaps. And early intervention is really critical. That's what those green arrows are pointing toward. The earlier we can intervene and close those gaps, the better off we are. Because once you grow those into later grades, it becomes much more difficult to recover.
So looking at this graph, let's say you start in kindergarten or first grade. It's, you look at the start below column. This is saying seventy-one percent of students in kindergarten, first grade start below grade level. And this is both in reading and math, or it's?
This is just literacy.
Just reading, I don't know. Where, where does that say that?
It, it might not. It's just.
It's because it's Lexia.
It's Lexia.
Okay. And that's, that's determined by a test that's given at the beginning of the year by Lexia?
Yeah, they call it auto placing. So the students will go through a series of questions. And then as a result of that, it can auto place them within the, the framework of Lexia in terms of how they're performing, if it's on, below, or above grade level.
So I'm pretty startled to see that there's not a single kindergartner that started above kindergarten level because I'm sure there are kids that come in that know more than the average kindergartner does.
Part of it's being able to take the test and the, using the computer and all that, they've gotta learn that.
Yeah, it's, it's a significant, it really is a signi- because you're looking on grade level. And so typically.
But kindergarten grade level literacy is minimal.
Well.
You'd be surprised.
But we've got gifted children in our, in our district. They start kindergarten too.
But I would tell, I would tell you giftedness really, if you research it, isn't identified until probably second or third grade.
Well, don't you think this thing ought to identify them?
I'm sorry.
Don't you think that's not to identify them when they take that test?
Not at that age.
Well, Baker read to himself when he started kindergarten. He wasn't the only one who did. You know, he could have taken that test. And if he didn't rank as above kindergarten level, I would have been like pretty weirded out.
Just because a child, there's more than just being able to read. You can read, can you understand, can you make connections? There's lots of different things. And if, from my understanding, Kendra, correct me if I'm wrong, that go into that assessment.
So then there's no kids that can read and understand above that level then?
Well, it, it is a lot about comprehension. It's phonics, it is phonemic awareness, it is processing all of that together to be on grade level. So it's quite a bit. And I can, I can maybe show you some more of that information or get them to give you a response. But we're not terribly surprised by that.
Hypothetically speaking, if there was a pre-K situation, would you maybe see a few more than zeros?
Yes, yes. So we don't give it to the pre, our actual pre-kindergarten students, but the kindergartners will progress on that during the course. So that's where you might see their skills show up.
I, I just don't think that's accurate.
So to me, what's striking is, as I saw earlier, seventy-one percent are free and reduced lunch. This tells me seventy-two percent start below grade level. Direct correlation? Or am I drawing an improper conclusion because the numbers are very close?
Correlation is not causing.
That's what I'm asking. So is there a correlation or is there not? Because the numbers look identical to me.
Well, I mean, in terms of actual, you know, quantified correlation, I, no, we haven't looked at that particular. I couldn't give you an, an actual, you know, P factor that would give us a correlation. But in terms of, you know, kind of a common sense thought pattern, I would say that that couldn't be eliminated.
Readiness matters.
And, and I like common sense.
And we, and we see the percentage that move into the in or above, which, that looks high, or that looks like a good number, at least on one of the ones.
Real good in kindergarten and first grade. That's why they got the arrows there.
Yeah. You would expect then the next year for how many of those kids to fall below again?
Well, again, at, when you start again at the beginning of the year in terms of being on grade level mastery, you have an entire year to get on grade level. So it's not where you come to.
So it's end of year skills tested at the beginning of the year. Is that what you're asking? Is that what you're asking?
So, so to answer your question then, for kindergartners, they'd have to test out of kindergarten at the beginning of the year.
Oh, I'm certain that there are some kindergartners. There may not be very many.
I didn't mean to open that can again, but, but, okay, this helps. So seventy-one percent of kindergartners are not mastering kindergarten yet.
Two or three.
Or they're below.
And there's not a similar one for, for I Ready, or is this a compilation of both?
We have the minutes of irony data.
Okay.
Just from my personal experience, my kids have had, they had to learn how to take the test to get the scores and to do it. There's a learning school, there's a learning on how to use the computer, how to take the test, how to do it. So I think that's part of it.
Then that makes it not super accurate, is what I'm saying.
At the start, but once you continue to go on, that, once you learn, that continues on.
Yes, I'm not saying throw it out, but.
But it's, giftedness is judged on more than just one piece of information to you. There'll be multi-facets of data that you use. So this is just one piece to that.
So Kendra, moving forward, looking at this information, this is kind of your baseline. So next year, you can look at those, these same kids, you can see how they progress. Something that I would try to be really concerned about or look at is how much are they losing over the summer? And how, how those kids who are in summer school, how much are they doing better than those that didn't participate in, in the summer school? That's something that I would be really interested to see how that gap.
So when they come back in the summer, they start right where they left off.
So for summer school?
For, and, and they can use this in the summer school. So even if they use it in summer school, so their progress isn't lost, they'll start right where they left off for any amount of time that they were on the program.
Okay.
Okay, any other questions about that?
I wish I would have had this one I taught. I Ready especially.
Going deeper into the program, it is, it is really phenomenal. It really, really is. And the next piece that we're gonna look at, and this is I Ready data, and this is in terms of reading. We just recently received this information. And what's unique about this slide is it lets us have some national comparisons to internal data, which for us is important. We take our diagnostic two early in the winter. We started December third. So that's significant because sometimes other districts wait a little bit and that can affect the comparisons that you're looking at. We do this so that we can get started early. We want the students to be on their learning path right away. And so as a result of that, our diagnostic one is early and our diagnostic two is early, but it's within the window so we can have a comparison set. So you'll notice that the bar graphs are a little bit different than what you'll see in the chart below. Because we take it early, our placement is more early winter placement. And so for those particular data sets, we had two of the nine grade levels that were below the national comparison by just a little. And we had seven of nine of those grade levels at or above the national comparison set for reading. One of the areas when we did get this data, we looked a little bit closer at third grade. When you look at that bar graph, there was about a fourteen percent difference. And so in speaking with some folks that were helping us better understand the data, we did look at that and had some conversations surrounding that. Because the nice part about this kind of data is it's not an autopsy. It's something that we can continue to have actionable data around. When we looked at the Lexia data at this time of year, we had sixty-eight percent of our first graders in or above grade level. So that was another data point that gave us a little pause there. And you'll see in the next slide, when we look at the growth associated with this particular data, it was right about where it needed to be. But I will tell you that the performance data is a moment in time. So that's the slide we were just looking at. It's not up there anymore. But that is, that is a test taken a moment in time. So the next slide really looks at growth. And growth is more a student assessment data over time. And so it looks at performance either between assessment data or with Lexia. Every question that the student answers is a data point that they can look at growth. And so what would we, what we would expect to see this time of year is at least fifty percent towards that line at the top. And so even with our first grade, that we had a bit of a concern in terms of performance compared to national performance. We can see they're still growing at a rate we would expect. But again, one thing that we always consider is if our, our students need to grow a little bit more than typical growth, then we'd like to see growth accelerated a little above that.
One hundred percent equals one year's worth of academic progress, according to this data. So what you would expect to see is fifty percent or greater for them to be on target for one academic year's worth of growth. And like I said earlier, many of our students have readiness challenges and have to grow more than is typical for one academic year. So you would, you would like to see these kinds of bars where you have students who have met one typical year's worth of growth by the middle of the year, as, as, in the case of eighth grade. Or at eighty percent, when you're looking at third, fourth, and fifth grade. Because that means you're on a trajectory to grow more than one typical year's worth of growth.
And it is not typical this time of year to see a hundred percent of growth like eighth grade. And so that was something that was quite a celebration in terms of this particular data set for us.
But at the very least, you'd like to see fifty percent.
Correct.
That puts you on track for one full year worth of academic growth.
Yeah.
And how long of, how many years now have we had this?
This is the second year.
For the whole district?
Yes.
And we tested it the year before.
Yes. And six or seven schools, Kevin?
Yeah.
The year before.
Do you have any questions about this particular slide?
I'm glad that we're showing the growth because sometimes before, in the different ways that they would show, you know, you would get your score, the growth was never really factored in.
Right.
And so I'm really glad that we're showing that growth now.
Okay, so the next piece that we're gonna look at has to do with math data. And we're gonna skip right into I Ready data. We don't have a platform like Lexia for math. So this again is I Ready data. This is our winter performance based on our diagnostic two. And it, they were able to compare to national data as a comparison set. And just as before, we are really a little more in tune to the early on grade level placement. And in those particular areas, that's the graph at the bottom below the bar charts, we had four of nine grade levels above and five of nine grade levels below the national performance. And again, that's a test taken in a moment in time.
So am I reading that right? Nationally, less, in seventh and eighth grade, less than twenty percent in each of those. So less than one out of five kids is on grade level?
No, I don't, I don't.
The seventeen and nineteen.
Yeah, the seventeen and nineteenth. For seventh and eighth graders, so are middle schoolers.
The national average.
The national average.
Oh, yes. That, that's the national average of.
That is very scary.
Performing at this time of year on grade level.
That's still surprising.
No, yes, I'm surprised it's that low. I expected it to be low, but that's scary.
What would that get to by the end of the year?
That's what we're gonna see next step.
Roughly.
It is.
And we could look at our last year's performance. But again, yeah, those two particular areas do trend low nationally and statewide.
Well, and I think it still goes back to kind of the point that Laura and Kendra were making. If you already have kids who are starting behind.
Gets worse by the.
The gap that you have to close continues to widen. So, so that, that's why that growth comparison is very important.
Their self-confidence in math too. They stop trying, it just gets worse.
And there's a lot of, it's just on literacy early, but not as much on, I think there is now today more on math, but there used to be. It was all on literacy.
Well, it's easier to cheat on that.
And, and more and more math, more and more math is linked to literacy because it's not just one plus one anymore. It's a lot of reading and problem solving. So if you're not a good reader, you are probably gonna struggle with math as well. So there is a comparison of those areas now.
So here comes what you were after.
So the next slide is again, we're looking at growth. And this is math. Again, this is based on the I Ready data. And so again, this is our winter performance. And this is students' growth over a series of time. And so it's not just their performance on that particular snapshot. And you can see from this particular chart, we are at right around fifty percent. Most of them are greater than fifty percent. Fourth grade was at, right at forty-nine percent. But again, we saw the same type of growth pattern for our eighth graders. So again, lots of growth.
What the, what the major teachers do.
Exactly. That's why the I Ready folks ask this.
I Ready really helped them in sixth grade so that they're not too far behind as they move.
Then you're spoiling.
But that is not typical. They don't typically see this.
Yeah, I was gonna say.
Well, I think it's just gonna. Well, I think it's just going to get better and better whenever we have tools that we can use and actually be able to really pinpoint what's going on with each individual kid.
And they handle this. So each student receives a lesson plan or lesson, series of lessons that are a fingerprint of their results on these diagnostics. So they work through those lessons weekly, monthly. And so it's very prescribed to them. And a lot of it is grade levels that are far below eighth grade. So some of it could be third grade work, some of it could be sixth grade work. And so it helps backfill those skill gaps that make them ready to receive on grade level curriculum. So this time of year is when we're really wanting to start really providing that on grade level curriculum and hope, but have worked to backfill those skill gaps so that they are ready to then perform, have a higher performance.
So what does this look like in the classroom? I know that when they do I ready on the computer, it's when there's some time to be working individually. But then the class is being taught at a different level if they're behind, right?
Well, they, the way that we see it a lot, and Dr. Norman can certainly, and Dr. Hubbell can speak to this too, but what we see is sometimes whole group instruction. But then we also have workshops, areas, choice time, kind of what we call it at the middle school level. So that the students can be working individually on that lesson path that is created for them. And so a lot of times that teacher is facilitating that student's instruction by pulling small groups. So.
But are they having to try to do the class level work?
So they would still be introduced, say, to fractions and multiplying fractions. And then their individual lesson may be simple fact fluency, if they haven't mastered fact fluency.
Because math is so funny how it builds on itself. I worry that they're not ready for that. And they're just like, ah, I don't know what you're doing here, you know?
But if they're not introduced to it, then the gap widens.
Oh, I agree. I'm just thinking, how is that, how do they do that?
And that's what we have seen with those students is for the first time, well, this is our seventh year. They're engaged in their learning because they are, they're actually having some success. And then it helps prepare them for that whole group instruction.
Okay, I figured that must be how it was, but I just sort of wondered.
Have, have these, have these growth tools been studied to the point where kids that do well on I ready and Lexia in these K through eight years do well on other standardized tests like ACT, SAT? In other words, if we see kids growing on this, which we do, especially in English, does that translate later on? Or are they just learning how to use this computer program?
I would say that's a little too early since this is only our second year. And then I ready is used most in K through six and then in seventh and eighth grade in math particularly.
But we're not a pilot district, are we, for this? I mean, nationally, have.
Kendra, do you have that information?
I don't have any studies that have been done in terms of correlating I ready scale scores to ACT scores. But I would say that our students that achieve on, are on a path to proficiency, so either they're going to meet their end of year skill score or they're going to meet a growth scale score, which is putting a far behind student on path to proficiency is common sense, going to likely score higher or in a better category on the ACT.
You hope it works, I agree.
Because I, because when we look at the domains in I ready, it correlates very well to the domains where in, in ACT that we would consider opportunities for improvement to develop action plans and work around.
And we're correlating this to our math. I mean, yeah, this correlates to the state test at grade level. So, you know, if they're, if they're progressing here, that's what's telling us then come math test time, that's where we would expect them to be. And so that, that's just taking it further. But in between, there you have this middle school, high school things that might skew that correlation to an ACT or an SAT.
How long have these programs been around?
I don't know how long I ready has been around. But I will say that one of the things that was helpful for us to learn, because the state assessments were new, it was hard, you can't compare back because it's not a true comparison. But we were able to look at scale scores that students had on I ready last year and then look at how they performed on the state test. And so we did find that if a student performs at their scale score, that is their end of year scale score, which would mean grade level mastery, they're likely to perform proficient or advanced on the math test.
It's not, I read it's, it's not really showing them tests. It's assessing them as they interact with the software, right? So they're really not being trained to do well on tests. It's actually measuring their competence.
It's a, it's a.
That's my question.
Yeah, I don't think they're learning how to take the test, which I kind of picked up on your thought earlier. It's actually assessing, do they know the data?
It's a, it's a skill development.
Yeah, it's not, they're not being quizzed throughout like, like normal e-learning. It's, I've seen some of it. It's just picking up on how they answer little mini assessments.
Right, and that's why I wondered, how well does this translate later on in life or later on in their schooling?
Well, there's some kids that are brilliant, but they can't do very well on a standardized test.
Yeah, teaching the tests, teaching how to handle a test is a whole different deal. It's not being covered in I ready or Lexia. It's actually learning what they actually know.
So the state will give us practice tests.
Yeah.
And then the practice tests help the students take them online.
Learn how to navigate a platform.
Tools and those kind of things. And it'll give them data and feedback to this, to the teachers as to standards the same way that I ready does and how students are performing on those. But again, you know, we just have to be careful on how much assessing is going on as opposed to teaching.
Exactly.
Right, there has to be a very good balance there.
We were just talking about the time, so we'll, Chris, you want to?
Sure.
Keep going, I'll double check if Cindy is supposed to be in here or not.
Okay, career and technical education. This slide is from Hilliard Technical Center. This is the Perkins Core Indicators of Performance. One change there, they report out the TSAs, that's the Technical Skill Assessments. That indicator that you get from DESI also includes business, facts, project lead the way. So it's not really reflective of career and technical education in its purest sense out at Hilliard. So in industry recognized credential, that's the IRC. Those are certificates much like the MT1 certificate that students can earn. You've probably heard that phrase, portable, stackable credentials. So some of our students may graduate with, you know, up to two certificates that they can take immediately into maybe a two-year program or straight into the workforce, earning a competitive salary. So the, we're very pleased to see the gains there with the IRCs earned from 80 to 90.4. Program completion, this is the, the second big indicator that we look at, measurement for success. 93.6% program completion. Now, these are secondary students only. So these are high school students who have completed a two-year plan of study at Hilliard Technical Center in the 93% placement. So we're very proud of the efforts underway.
What's placement mean?
Placement means that for, for the program you study, you found employment in that field. Thank you.
The next few slides are about the annual performance report, also known as the APR, published by the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education. So the first slide there shows the five categories, the five standards assessed by MSIP V, the points possible, how many points we earned and our percentage earned. So if you look at the bottom right-hand corner, you can see that in 2018, we earned 91.2% of the points possible. Significant gains in attendance were made last year. The next, next few slides are the data that was used to derive that. And I want to point out the information at the top because I think this is really important for everybody to understand is that the assessment results in 2015, 2016, and 2017 in the content areas of English Language Arts and Mathematics for grades three through eight and end of course assessments in English II and Algebra I are not comparable to prior years. So for us to say that our third grade ELA scores increased X percent compared to last year, that we should not be making those comparisons.
Okay, DESI says you can't because the tests and the standards are different. So no matter how our inclination is to compare to a previous year's assessment, we just can't, this is a baseline year.
Well, in the last five years, we've had four different tests.
That's what I was going to say, didn't we just have the same situation like three years ago?
Yes, and it will continue again for one more year when next year the science rolls back on.
So that's possible.
And another thing to know is that this is last spring's data. So we're almost.
A year old.
A year old.
We're almost ready to take the test.
Exactly, right. So that's why our I ready and our Lexia data is so important to helping our teachers in the classroom. The, the next slide is Communication Arts Overall Achievement. And so this just breaks down, and just to give the acronyms, LND is Level Not Determined, so students that might not have taken the test. BB is Below Basic, B is Basic, P is Proficient, and A is Advanced. And then a number that we use a lot is the combined categories of proficient and advanced. So that's, the first slide is Communication Arts. The next slide is our Mathematics data. And then the third slide is our Social Studies. To point out, the slide, 72.8% of our students in Social Studies are at proficient or advanced. And so I think a thing that we need to remember is that to take and be successful in a Social Studies test, our students have to be able to read and write. And so we know that our students can perform at the high school level in a Social Studies Content Area Assessment using those skills in reading and writing.
What grade is that taken in?
12th grade.
It's just.
So question before you go on.
Sure.
So if we go back up to the total points possible?
100.
Yeah, that one, yeah. So if I'm explaining this to Joe Blow public, how do I explain this? What's the takeaway, one, two, or three, whatever it is? Is this good, bad? Is this an A, a B, a C, a D? What is this? What does this mean? Well, how do I explain this to the average voter or person on the street that doesn't know education?
One thing you can't say is we got the highest score we've ever had before.
Right, okay, that's one. Next. So I assume it's not an F or a D.
I don't know what that means. We don't know what that means, but we didn't know.
That's what I'm asking, translate it for me into understandable, non educator language, please.
Improvement in student attendance from last year compared to years prior would be another takeaway. Social studies, high school social studies, academic achievement would be another piece of information to share with them. And then the, the subgroup achievement of our underprivileged children and our privileged children, that we still have a gap. And we're, that's a gap that we need to address.
Also in college and career readiness, we posted some of our highest, well, I think the highest score we've ever posted in college and career readiness. So we're doing a better job preparing kids for their what's next, whether that's the military, two-year, four-year, or career. We are doing better in those areas. Certainly would love to make more progress and are working toward more progress. We have goals in academic achievement, which would touch not only category one, but category two as well. And that's why you see we're in year two of Lexia and I ready because we have a recognized need there to close gaps. And we have to do something more than a summative assessment at the end of the year in terms of the state assessment so that we know in real time, what are the skill gaps and how do we address them in the classroom on, on a daily basis?
So when we talk about the subgroups, we were just saying how hard it must be to not speak English and, you know, try to be on grade level and stuff. Is, is that one of the subgroups?
It is.
Quickly give us a couple of subgroups.
Yes, so free and reduced lunch, special education, students who have been in the country for one year or more, so you do not take the test if you've been in the country for one year or less. And then there are demographics for ethnicity.
And so the percentage of our kids that are, that are in a subcategory is?
I don't know the percentage off the top of my head, Laura.
It's going to be really high because 71% of our students are free and reduced lunch. And free and reduced lunch is one of our subcategories.
And you can count in more than one category, is that correct, Kendra?
Sure.
Yes.
Are there any take home messages as to how we're doing compared to other districts in our region?
Yes, I mean, so you can certainly look at the state report card and see where we are compared to the state. I would say that our, our gap either on, at, or below, above or below the state average, we have examined to see where we are. And we're, we're holding our own. I would call us steady, really. We aren't far above and we aren't far below in those areas where we have exceeded or, or undershot the state average. We don't, we don't want to be close. We want to be far above. So that's really what we're working toward. Kendra, have I misspoken anything that you'd like to add to that?
Nope, that's.
I, I did want to make note about attendance. I know we've said a lot about the improvement, but some charts were shared over the weekend about the comparison where our district fits in, in respect to some of the other districts. Last year, I'm saying last year, 2016, 17, the district ranked 516 out of 559. So the 2017, 18 year, 4 of 7 out of 560. So significant, you know, 109 places of improvement, so.
And you can compare that from year to year.
Yes, you can.
That hasn't changed. You don't, you don't calculate that differently. You're either at school or you're not at school. That, that test.
Being at school makes a difference.
Goal two. Goal two is hope and engagement. These are some of the strategies that have been implemented to support academic and student success. The first one I want to talk to you about is the multi-tiered system of supports. Efforts have been underway in the district since about 2016 or so to develop an MTSS framework. So what you see up there, this is a conceptual model of a multi-tiered system of student supports in multiple domains. So academic supports, Lexia, I ready, so many of those supports would fit under academic as well. College and career readiness, that would include employability skills, attendance initiative, and then of course, social emotional. This would be behavior interventions, some, many of our trauma informed practices that support our students in addition to bully prevention efforts. So this is where, we view MTSS as a means to take so many of these initiatives that are underway and blend it into a cohesive way to communicate to our staff and to our public about that. So a district MTSS team that is representative, that's been formed. We will meet next week if we have school. This group will work with representatives from DESI next week on the 27th as part of the district's participation in the Missouri Model District Behavior Program.
Are they coming here or are people going?
They are coming here. We're going to do a half day. And, and that is free, so.
Awesome.
It's exciting.
Okay, the next set of data we're going to look at has to do with our Gallup Student Poll. And this includes non cognitive metrics with links to student success. And the ones that we're really going to look at today are engagement, which is the involvement in and enthusiasm for school, and hope, which is the ideas and energy students have for the future. And those two are very, are, are correlated. So basically, again, like I said, these are non cognitive measures, but they're constructs that are related to student outcomes that are malleable via some intentional efforts. So when we look at our engagement index, we have 46% of our students that are engaged. We've seen a bit of a downward trend over the past three years. One of the things that we do with this data is we look at the item responses that the students answer as a, as a way to get at what their engagement level is. And that data is actually, is actionable. So those are things that concrete responses can occur at the district level and at the building level. And so one of the things that we've, we definitely honed in on was an item, I feel safe in this school. In terms of green mean index, that also we compared to the United States Green Mean Index, we saw about a point two drop, which was significant. And so certainly helped inform next steps around the things that you guys have been seeing in terms of improving safety in the school, in the school.
Well, couldn't that mean though, bullies? Doesn't necessarily mean that they think that the building is unsafe.
True, absolutely.
Well, it could also correlate to the crime rate in the community going up.
Yeah, which also doesn't really have anything to do with the building.
Right, so one of the things we do with, for example, program evaluation is to drill down on that and to ask students what makes. down on that and to ask students, what makes you feel safe at school? And you're exactly right. It can be a lot of different factors. When a student reports, I feel safe at school, that mean, that can mean vastly different things to that student. And one of the areas that we, and we'll talk about this at a different time, is the neighborhoods feeling safe, feeling safe standing for the bus, those kind of things, or feeling safe in the school.
Someone's not going to make them beat up on them or, or make them feel bad.
Absolutely. So, those are, those are items then that can result in some concrete steps and action plans around that. The next slide is Hope. So, this are, these are the ideas and energy students have for the future. So, we had, right now, we have forty-three percent of our students feel hopeful. We have, again, for the past three years, had a decline, we've seen a trend downward. One of the areas that we looked at significantly in terms of item responses here is, I have a great future ahead of me. And so, again, that's an item response that we've seen a decline in, and that is something then too, that we can kind of drill down on and find out what, what kind of actionable steps can be taken either at the building level or at the district level. For example, mentoring is a significant piece that Gallup actually would recommend in terms of improving that particular item, and things like project-based learning. Gallup has found are certainly correlated with helping students engage in their work that they do as meaningful, and then that also correlates with hope. So, those are two of the things, just to be brief, that we're doing in regard to that.
And every building gets their own set, their data dashboard. So, you know that there are mentoring programs that have been started in some of our elementary schools very recently. They have recognized that these are ways to make inroads into the hope and engagement pieces that do correlate with academic outcomes.
So, these are K through twelve responses?
So, fifth through twelve grade takes the Gallup Student Poll, correct?
So, again, I think that we need to look bigger picture and what's going on in the community, because I know that.
You saw the district data, that every school has their own.
Right, but I'm just saying that, community-wise, the last few years that we've had have just been, you know, pretty much a living hell. And I think that people think that this doesn't affect children. It affects children on a daily basis.
And so, as I mentioned earlier, our third goal is building meaningful relationships with families and the community to really achieve those people learning competencies. And to be brief, I knew that our time would be short today, shorter than the sixty minutes that, you know, we think of an hour, it feels like a long time, but it, it gets.
Goes quick.
It does. So, the, the things that I have divided this into are, are authentic learning opportunities and our partnerships, and then what are our remaining goals? So, authentic learning, you've heard a lot about the early literacy and blended learning consultant that we've had, Glenda Monacino, she has worked with all of our elementary schools with Innovation and Intervention Team for K through two literacy. So, really focused on that. Project-based learning, you know, that we are continuing in our work with the Buck Institute to immerse our district in more authentic and experience-related activities. So, for instance, you know, the, the kids at Carden Park last year worked with Parks and Recreation and with other community professionals in order to design their front park. And then those projects were, they presented them and they were judged. So, those sorts of authentic experiences help them not only learn the content related to writing and reading and mathematics, but also presentation and connects them with some career opportunities to give them some hope. You know, I, I never thought about this as a career for myself, and here I can do that. Our innovation team is a small group that applied for and became part of our PBL Leadership and Innovation Leadership Team. Connections with real-world problems and, and experts. We want students, you know, we talk about, you see on, in the middle column, those teacher externships. We want a lot of our teachers to get into the businesses and industries in the community, because that is a way to expand the relatable content to more students. So, not every student right now has had an internship or an apprenticeship, but if our teachers understand what is expected in the professional environment or advanced manufacturing environment in this community right now, then they can take those problems and experiences back into their classroom, and they can implement some of the lean manufacturing or Sigma that they see at Behringer. They can implement some of the strategies that they see at Mosaic or at, you know, Norium or any of those places and make those kinds of connections with the content that they're teaching the, the children. And we have a new partnership with Progressive, UCP and Mosaic, where our students with developmental disabilities will be employed next year. And so they will be learning very valuable skills and, and having those experiential opportunities while they're in our schools. The partnerships, our family involvement coordinators and our title schools are critical bridges between family and school. Again, the teacher externships, and you've heard a lot this year about apprenticeships. We have more companies wanting to sponsor students because they recognize that this is a meaningful partnership, not only, you know, for our students, but also for, for the future of their companies. MT1, which is Manufacturing Technician Certificate Program, that's a partnership between Missouri Western and Hilliard and the Chamber of Commerce. And we are, we actually are a near three of that and have a greater success level than we have had in the previous year. So, that is something that, you know, it's growing, its momentum is growing. Of course, Drive for Five, you know that attendance and, and regular presence is not only a school habit, it's a work readiness habit. It's important in terms of life skill. And then we are working, as, as several of you have heard me talk about or read in the Friday Update, the collaboration that we have undertaken with the Heartland Foundation for a character education initiative that is not only school-based but community-based. I think that is going to be something that has the potential, should we receive a grant, to be very powerful. The goals that we have remaining, we want to continue focusing on those foundational practices. While we, we shared those back in the fall, we want to make sure that all of our classrooms are meeting those foundational practices as minimum expectations. We want our students to have great experiences in every classroom, no matter which school they attend. So, those are important in terms of consistency across the district. Our work with the Missouri Model Districts for Behavior is going to forward our work with MTSS. I think, you know, that, that support for students in academics and social emotional and in behavioral is critical to overall success for our district, particularly as we're seeing social, emotional, and behavioral challenges. And then, you know, just to continue to grow the impact of those experiential opportunities, whether they're internships or apprenticeships, I believe that our students have to really stand out, jump off the page when they apply for jobs or, or scholarships or college. And, and a way for them to do that is to have had real-world experiences. So, to find a way for all of the students to have some sort of internship or apprenticeship, maybe not long-term, but some sort of immersion experience that is meaningful to them and their future is something that we continue to work for. And I know that we have been answering questions throughout, but if there are any overall questions that we can answer, we would be open to those at this time.
This was helpful.
Yes.
Good.
Really good.
There's so much data, it was hard to narrow down what to, what to share today and what to, you know, maybe save for another day, but.
Well, and that's part of what I think this goal is also, is to start having something like this. So, again, you can be focused truly on the academic components of things within the district, even though there's a lot of other things that you manage, just really should be one of the main areas that you focus on. And hopefully, we're moving in that direction. So, you've got a great team of folks here that, that can get this information for you, and we'll continue to take a look at that. So, if there are some other specific areas that you want some data on, you know, and we set this up to do again, you know, we can continue to take a look at what those particular areas are, because there's, there's a whole lot more than just what we showed you today or what they showed you today. So, other questions?
I just have an, in general question, because I know when I came on the board three years ago, we did an awful lot of testing at quarter and all this, but now all that testing has been replaced by I Ready and Lexia, or are we still doing the stop everything and test type, MAP type preparedness tests?
So, we were doing a lot of that in kindergarten and first grade, and we revised the kindergarten and first grade grade card, so that those assessments, if you will, could be more of the formative. So, I'm a classroom teacher, I've got a reading group, I can take anecdotal notes that I, the student knows their letters. I don't have to set the child down and say, what letter is this? Which is kind of some of the things we were doing in the past. So, we've worked to streamline that quarterly assessments at the kindergarten and first grade significantly.
Are we still giving them at the other levels, grade levels? Because I know they were doing them all through elementary school, and, and the thought was, we're overtesting, we're overtesting.
What do they call them? Benchmarks.
Benchmarks, yes.
Yeah, benchmarks, every district calls it something different, I can't remember what they call it.
Our assessment plan has been really very streamlined, and that was one of the goals that we had about two and a half years ago, is to begin to streamline that.
That's an important thing we can tell the public, too.
And so, they, they all, they kind of have their workout already set for them, and so, and we feel like that's, that's sufficient for what we're driving at. And so, but at this time of year, we typically do see, you know, buildings taking practice MAP tests. Just to prepare for the online tools, to see what it's going to be like, kind of run the landscape a little bit, but we're not dropping.
And not to the extent that was happening. I don't, because I haven't heard that in the last year or so. And, so I wondered, and, you know, again, I Ready and Lexia take, can take the place, because you've got that continuous data individually for every kid with, that you didn't get from benchmarks, necessar.
You really should do, and I forget, it may have been Michelle that said, formative assessment is really your best tool, is while you're educating kids through the process, until you get to the end of what you want them to know. And then, then there needs to be some type of substantive evaluation, but that doesn't mean that you stop. That's just part of the progression of how you teach kids, is here's where we started, here's where we're going up, here's what they need some more reinforcement on. Okay, now we're at the point that I need to know if they've mastered this skill or not. Then the question becomes, what do you do if they didn't master the skill? And that's where MTSS and other interventions have to come in to keep closing this gap for our kids.
And I think that's a good thing, just because, you know, I heard over and over and over again, we overtest, overtest, and you can overtest, I mean, it can happen. And, and we weren't spending quality time teaching, we were having the, you know, the available time to teach. But I've not heard that, and so I think when I see all this, it's like, wow, you know, you guys are.
Anything else, questions for the team? On the data of industry certificates, what, how many students did that represent the two years?
I would say it was about a hundred seventy-four students per year.
About.
About a hundred seventy-four.
About a hundred seventy-four.
That's a weird number.
A hundred seventy-four point three.
Well, yeah, right.
We might have had four hundred and fifty-four students.
I might have worked on that slide last week.
We're just teasing you, that's.
Sometimes I don't hear myself.
It's just fun, you know, doesn't mean.
So, was this useful?
Yes.
Most of.
And, you know, taking it out of a more beating setting, this relaxes it. I'm formulating and thinking of questions, not worried about the setting of, where are we on the agenda, how long is it? You know what I mean? There's just things that come in, this is a much more relaxed setting, I feel like I'm going to remember a lot more.
It used to be that we'd start covering this around ten thirty on a Monday night.
Yeah, no, no lie, and they know.
You do, you do melt down after a while.
You know, and the thing is, they've always been excellent in presenting information, I mean, always, but how we received it based on the setting, I think, makes the difference.
Well, if this is helpful, we'll continue to try to look at ways to, to do that, and we'll talk to the team and see what other information needs to come to the front of us. So, thank you for taking time out in your day to be a part of this, so you have to wrap up.
We need a motion to adjourn.
So, move.
Second.
Motion in a second.
I know how to do that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
That's why I'm excited about this program.